I'm Nick Armstrong and you're watching Dear Fort Collins, a podcast featuring the people that make Fort Collins a wonderful place to live. This series of episodes is all about the election that's happening in November 2025. And we're interviewing all of the different candidates for mayor, city council, and PSD school board. And we want to hear from them in their own words about why they're running, what they care about, and you then can be more informed about who you're voting for when it's time to fill out your ballot. With ranked choice voting, it's really difficult to know sometimes who your candidates are and what order you're going to rank them in. So I hope these series of episodes really help you figure out which candidates best align with your interests and needs. And as we do these interviews, I want you to know that I have given the candidates access to the questions in advance. I try to ask all of the candidates the same questions, or at least give them an opportunity to answer the same questions in the same kind of way. And there's very minimal editing on any of these episodes. So unless there was an errant sneeze or a cat jumping on someone's lap, you're hearing from the candidates in their own words. I do have a quick disclaimer to give you that I serve on the Parks and Recreation Board for the City of Fort Collins, and my opinions on this show are my own. They're not the position of the board or of the city. And I have also advised a number of the candidates about their campaigns, and in some cases have either helped with their campaigns or made a donation here or there. I do my absolute best to make sure that they all get fair treatment, that there aren't any favorites being played, and that also we're asking them the same types of questions, and they have an opportunity to answer those in kind. I hope that you enjoy these episodes and that they help you become a more informed voter in the upcoming election. And if you do have any questions, concerns, or comments, please let me know and reach out on the Dear Fort Collins website. I'm always happy to hear from you. And some of the questions that you'll hear me ask of the candidates have been submitted by listeners and watchers just like you, folks who are fans of the show and want to know more about particular candidates and their positions on particular things. So with that, let's get on with the show. On today's episode, we have Steve Urrash, who is running for a city council seat in District Three. Steve, welcome to the show.
Thanks, Nick.
Tell us about yourself and your campaign.
Sure. So I'm 64 years old now, and so I've been retired since for four years already. And so I want to run and be a city council person because I think we need a better balance of different views on the city council. Many of the council people seem to be all of a particular political persuasion. And so I think someone more in the center, such as myself, would help so that we could have better questions asked of the city staff and to really analyze from a more data analytical viewpoint what some of the things are that are going on. I worked in high tech for 38 years, 23 of them at Intel. And so I'm very data-driven, and I'm open to all kinds of philosophical approaches, but then eventually it has to come down to the data. So I would like to see the city be a little more financially responsible. The budget has increased 34% over the last five years. There are a lot of things the city needs to do and can and should do, but that does seem like a pretty rapid rise to me. So we need to be careful. I mean, you look at Denver, they've got budget problems. You look at the state of Colorado, they've got budget problems. So we don't want to get in that kind of a situation. So we need to have, you know, a more balanced perspective on the city council. And I think I can definitely genuinely bring that. I have created the Colorado Center Party. Now, the city council, of course, is nonpartisan, but it just kind of tells you where I am philosophically on the scale, and I like to see balance in all things.
So I want to dive into that party discussion in just a little bit, but what does Fort Collins mean to you in general?
Well, I grew up in Palo Alto, out in the Bay Area. And when I moved out here in 2003, it just seemed like home to me. I think there were a lot of things about Fort Collins, all of the trees, being close to some mountains, and just the general vibe of how everyone is so friendly. It just felt like home to me. So Fort Collins is very much home.
What sort of unique experience did you bring to the table?
So I think the center party, and having created that, is being a third party politically is very unique. You know, I can talk about being able to bring people together, but to actually do that as a political party where you're bringing people together with, you know, they're not all identical, right? Everybody has a little bit of nuance to their views, and to be able to hold those kind of discussions respectfully is very important. It's not completely unique, but I have served on two boards, Larimer County Board of Health and the Fort Collins Electric Board. And so those are two very important things that occur in the city, health and power, right? So I've got a pretty good grounding in how the city and the community operates with those things. And I think it may not be completely unique, but it certainly is very important.
Tell me a little bit more about your perception of the role of parties in the nonpartisan world that is the city council politic.
Well, I think a lot of the candidates get to where they are because they've been associated with a political party, and that's where they get their support. You look at Christopher Bramhall Conway, it's already, the previous report period, he had already raised $20,000, and he's a young guy. How do you do that without the support of a political party establishment? I don't think he did that going door-to-door or just asking his friends. I think it was the political party establishment that's supporting him. Same can be said for a lot of the candidates. Obviously, there are some who maybe are less viable than others. I mean, the mayoral race is an example, we've got a lot of candidates. But I think the more viable candidates do have the support of political party establishment. And so that those candidates show up at those political party events, rub elbows with the people who normally do the financial support, and that's where they get their support.
You totally have my agreement on something like VAN or the party data, other things like that, you know, door knocking and whatever else like that. Where I push back a little bit is, as an independent, I also ran as an unaffiliated voter, and, you know, my district election still hit that five-figure mark without any sort of party money influence coming in, certainly not my own anyways. That was, I don't have any parties to go and rub elbows with. So a lot of it was community tied donations and things like that. Where do you see the influence of parties leaning in from like third-party candidate endorsements or other like campaign contributions that are outside of the individual candidates? Because I know that's a thing where you can create an issues committee, for instance, and support any particular candidate or proposition that might be on the ballot this time.
So I'm not exactly sure where you're going with that. I mean, yes, there are issue committees, right? And we've got a renewal of the open space tax coming up. I support that. So, but I'm not sure where you're trying to go with that. I mean, that's great that you are able to raise money without, you know, political party support. My third party, the Colorado Center Party, is really small, so I'm not getting a lot of financial support from that. I'm basically going to have to self-fund my campaign. So I don't think I'm answering your question. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. To clarify, you can, as a citizen, create an issues committee that backfills support for a particular ballot measure or a candidate without donating directly to that candidate's campaign, which has limitations. The others are a little bit more, they track the donations, but there's not a hard and fast limit on what can be spent by whom.
So, you know, donating to a campaign like the renewal for the open space tax is really important because, you know, there are certainly important issues like that. So that doesn't necessarily affect me and my campaign. It affects the overall operation of the city because, you know, those are those issues for that. I helped preserve Fort Collins to gather signatures in the effort to stop the council's change of the land use code. So, you know, you need a little, at least a little bit of money for those kinds of operations to print your materials, if you're going to hand out materials and things like that. If any of that had gone to the voters, it would have been certainly very important to raise money for that kind of effort. But that never went before the voters. There were enough petition signatures that the council decided to, you know, change, or had to change course, right?
Do you feel that in general, the idea of campaign finance should be maybe like that, we have the idea of publicly funded elections that's sitting out there? Is that an idea that you would be potentially in support of to help reduce some of that influence of the greater parties that you see?
No, I do not support publicly funded campaigns because you've got a couple of two or three candidates for mayor, for instance, that probably won't raise any money, and giving them public funds would be an absolute waste, in my opinion. So to some degree, going out and raising money actually forces the candidate to at least make some contact with people. And so that's not a bad thing if they need to raise the money to get the word out of their candidacy. And if nobody's, if they need the money because they don't have any of their own and they're not getting it, that maybe that's a signal that their campaign's not going to go anywhere, right? So I do not support publicly funded campaigns. I actually support a big increase in the limit, I think, with, of how much a person can donate. I don't see how $150 being donated by an individual to my campaign is going to influence my vote on something. I don't think a $1,000 campaign donation would really influence my vote. I'm not going to be bought by a $1,000 donation, in my mind, that's just silly. And yet, so the difference between $150 and $1,000 is quite a bit, and it really limits the ability of some candidates to run a campaign. As a third party, I can't send out, you know, an email to 100,000 Colorado voters and ask them for $5 each to fund my campaign. I don't have that kind of reach. So actually, the way we have the campaign contributions right now so small, it actually benefits the entrenched interests of the establishment in the Democratic Party and the Republican Party.
So your district, I think, is one that just has two candidates in it. So ranked choice voting really land on your issues at this moment. Still a plurality where District Three is concerned. But as regard to the mayoral election, you know, do you see that that as a benefit for folks to be able to rank their choices and have an opportunity to more closely align with maybe their interests or, you know, even just who they decide to, you know, say, "I could have a beer with this person"?
Yeah. Oh, it's huge, Nick. It's absolutely huge. I'm a huge fan of ranked choice voting. It really will open the eyes of a lot of voters that, of how democracy can really work, and that you don't have to have just two choices, you know, a D and an R. You can have many more choices, and you are freed from the fear of the bad person winning. I have to vote for the lesser of two evils to make sure that the really bad candidate doesn't win. So ranked choice voting is wonderful. And so we'll really get to see in this mayoral race if people, voters, warm up to it. Because it's like, you know, well, I haven't been able to get to really know candidate A. I know a little bit, and I know something about candidate B, and it's like, okay, I don't have to worry that I'm choosing exactly the right one. I can vote for them one and two, and one of those two candidates will win, and I can make sure that by doing that, that the candidate three or four, that I know I don't like so much, you know, I can prevent them from winning. And so, and it'll force candidates to, I think, be more positive in their campaigning because if you go negative on one of the four candidates, well, what about the other ones, you know? It might accrue to the benefit of candidate C, and you're not necessarily going to win by going negative. So, and I think that's a benefit.
So narrowing this down to District Three again, what makes you especially qualified to represent District Three?
So I've been here since 2003, in the south part of Fort Collins. I think I was actually in District Two when I first moved here. But I think I support the suburban values. I think a lot of the residents of District Three do not want to see big increases in the housing density. They want to preserve their neighborhood character. It was, when I went around collecting signatures, it was so easy to get signatures to overturn what the city did in their land use code changes, which has now been usurped by the state legislature, of course. But whereas my opponent is more on the yinbi side and has been endorsed by, you know, Kathy Kipp and Andy Bosinecker, who represent the Democratic Party establishment. I don't think my opponent, Josh, is necessarily part of that establishment, but he certainly has been endorsed by them. And so, you know, I don't think the residents of District Three want to have that kind of political party establishment in control of the city council. I think they want to see more of a balance. And so I think, I think that's a, I don't know if you'd call that unique to me or just a difference between myself and my opponent. And so I do come with much more of a business background, right? I've worked in private industry my whole career. My opponent has not. My opponent has worked for Larimer County Government for a long time, I think, I guess at least 10 years, as I recall. So that's, my opponent is very steeped on the government side, whereas I have more unique experience on the business side, having been in private industry. And I'm not sure that any of the council members, correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, but I'm not sure any of the council members really have this kind of business background. They're, you know, maybe nonprofit or government experience.
So Mayor Arnt does talk about her family's business that, there are a number of different things across the years that her family was involved in. And so, you know, the other council members, I know that Susan was a teacher and so on. You know, they each have their own particular backgrounds and experiential bent. But, you know, I think it's an astute observation that the overall understanding and general awareness of small business issues across the community can always stand to benefit from someone with some business experience.
Right. And I think when I talk to people out in District Three, they often lament the attitude that the city government has towards small businesses, right? Getting their permits approved in a timely fashion. And although I'm anti-growth, anti-large growth, I don't want to be anti-developer or anti-business, and yet I feel people expressing that kind of opinion that the city just isn't receptive enough to the needs of businesses in our community.
Yeah. In general, there's a feel that big business tends to, and that tends to be the focus of a lot of economic health efforts, is pulling in the big employers, the HPs, the AMDs, the, you know, those are the folks that get the most attention and the most like, "Hey, come on, why don't we make a deal?". But overall, it tends to be that the small businesses are the ones that help facilitate the economy, help run things and help, you know, facilitate running for boards or, you know, sponsoring little leagues and other things like that. So support for small businesses in general is generally a good thing for an overall front of community because it's where 68% of the job growth is in Larimer County, at least, for our industries that are, our small businesses that are five or fewer employees make up 68% of our community's economy. So.
Yep. Great points.
Knowing that the council can set its own priorities list, can you share a specific project or issue that you'd like to address first if elected?
Well, I want to be able to make sure that I've got the right questions to ask and ask hard questions of staff when things are brought forward. One of my little pet project things is I would like to see more trees on the trails that we have. I think our trail system is just really good, but I think, and I like riding my bike on the trails, but I think we could do better. I think, I think, because it gets so hot in the summer, I think having some more trees along some of the trails where it's appropriate would help even more people make use. Because am I going to go out on the trail if it's 95 degrees outside? You know, well, maybe not. But if there were more shade, maybe I would. So I think, I think more trees on the trails would make them more accessible. But I need more feedback on where it's appropriate, where it's not appropriate, and things of that nature. But that's sort of my little pet project. I think the Foothills Mall is going to be redeveloped again. I was listening in on the city council meeting when a presentation from the developer was being made. They're still trying to investigate what to do with that. So I would, I would like to participate on how the city will work with the developer to make that happen.
So my curiosity there is, have you had a chance to check out the Urban Forest Strategic Plan that was just launched by the City of Fort Collins?
No. When was that launched?
So that was, it was just passed this year, and it's a plan that outlines the health and benefits of the urban forest as relates to public and private trees, including the ones that are along the bike lanes.
Great. Need to look at that.
Yeah. Tell me something that the voters would be surprised to learn about you, or if you don't have anything right off the top of your head, because a lot of the folks that I've been asking this question of, they were having trouble thinking of things. What was your weirdest job?
Well, my, so I did look at that in your write-up of what you were going to ask during the podcast. And my first job in high school was the cleanup boy in the local butcher shop in Palo Alto. And so, you know, I could do that after school and actually in the early evening. And the stinkiest thing that happens in the butcher shop was the crabs, right? So they would get Dungeness, big Dungeness crabs, and, you know, the crab legs are great, but the body is the stinkiest thing ever. So, but I learned about taking care of butcher blocks and sharpening knives. And so that was, that was, you know, taught me about hard work. I enjoy doing work. I do projects around the house all the time. You know, for me personally, I ride a motorcycle, so that's maybe a little different as well. Haven't ridden too much this year, but I like going up in the mountains and doing the twisties on the motorcycle. So that's a little different.
Along these same lines, if you could have any superpower to help your community, what would it be?
You know, that's a tough one. I'm not a big fan of Marvel Comics and superpowers. So, you know, I, so I'm not sure that I have a good answer to that. I am very concerned about water, so, and having enough water. So if my superpower was to shoot out a bunch of water, I would, I would make sure there was a lot more water around.
Is there anybody that you consider a role model in public service, and what have you learned from them?
So I really liked what President Bill Clinton did while he was president and balanced the budget. He was able to work across the aisle. President Reagan worked across the aisle with Tip O'Neill, right? Bill Clinton worked across the aisle with Newt Gingrich, you know, to get better budgets. I think more locally, I'm friends with Ray Martinez, and he's someone who serves the community from a nonprofit perspective and helping people. I really admire that in Ray. I actually also, well, Wade Troxel. You know, there might have been some controversial things that Wade was involved in, but I also think he did some good things. I was actually very impressed with how Jenny Arnt handled the whole protest stuff with wanting the council to make a resolution in support of the Gaza ceasefire. And Jenny was very level-headed, very calm through that whole thing, and I was very impressed with how she handled that. I mean, you can still see the shadow of the person's outline of the hand where this person, protester glued her hand to the wall inside the city council chambers.
Is there a particular piece of advice that you received and didn't follow? And now that you have thought back on it, you kind of wish you had?
Well, certainly, I was given advice to buy some Google stock before the year 2000, and I never did. So I've been fairly conservative in a lot of my stock investing. One of my buddies works at Nvidia. I actually worked for Nvidia CEO Jensen Huang when I was working at LSI Logic out in Milpitas, California. I've made a fair amount of money off of real estate and not off of all the stock transactions. So, yeah, I've had good stock advice and never really took it.
We talked a little bit about the redevelopment of the Foothills Mall. Personally, I'd love to see that space become a convention center of some sort. It seems to, you know, have a lot of space and have a lot of services around it. What do you hope that Fort Collins will look like in 20 years from now?
Well, I hope that it doesn't look much different than it does today. I think the Foothills Mall could make it look a little different for the good. Convention center might be a good idea. I think, though, that from watching the presentation, I think they actually want to do some kind of a little park so that moms who can bring their kids to the little park and then take them shopping, and that there'll be some more housing as well. It just, the Foothills Mall has not done well with the retail stuff there. You know, I'm sure part of that is people shop on Amazon online all the time, right? So they definitely were talking about how the shops along college have done fine. People travel in their cars up and down college, so they know where the Lululemon shop is because you can see the sign for it as you're driving along college. because you can see the sign for it as you're driving along college. But the stuff inside, further inside the mall, it's like, who knows what stores are there, right? So, yeah, that'll be interesting to see what happens with that. I'm open to ideas, but, you know, I want to use a data-driven approach and and scrutinize what happens to it. So but in general, I don't, I think Fort Collins is great. I don't think it needs to change a lot.
So you mentioned an interest in using the superpower of of creating water. How will you, as a city council member, approach water and growth planning towards Fort Collins' future?
So first of all, we need to limit the growth because we aren't going to have a lot of water, right? So you've got NISP and Haligan, expansion of Haligan. And that will hopefully provide a little more water. But with the climate change that's occurred, you know, we could be looking at some persistent droughts. The lake level in Lake Powell is getting pretty close to Deadpool. And you're going to have California and Arizona screaming for more water and trying to force us not to suck more from the the western side. So the first thing first, when you when you find yourself in a hole, stop digging, right? So stop building high-density housing that's going to cause more water usage because there's not going to be enough water for for all these people. Same thing with parking, right? So the the new rules from the state on the land use code do not require parking, which I think is bad. I think we're a community that's really difficult to rely on public transportation. We're we're a suburban community. And and so I think it's it's folly to expect that the our trans public transportation is going to allow you to survive without a car. And and if you don't have sufficient parking, it's going to be a huge mess. Okay, so I own three condos that I rent out as rental properties, one in Fort Collins, one in Lublin, one in Green. Whenever I go to the HOA meetings, what do you think's the hottest topic? Parking, right? So you you need to be able to provide enough parking in the land use codes that the state has enforced, don't allow that. And other communities have used those parking requirements as sort of a leverage with developers to get the kind of development that they want for the city. And now the cities won't have that because the state took it over. Now, there is a lawsuit on that. Maybe the state overreached, maybe we'll go back to, you know, allowing home rule, cities and counties to to take care of their own land use code, and that'll become a huge issue again for for the city. So, yeah, for the first thing is do no harm. Try try to limit the growth and to to make sure that we will always have enough water. The la the city council has already reduced the amount of water that what industrial, light industrial, commercial developments can use per square foot, right? So there's already been, the council has already instituted a reduction on that. And that you're going to get more of that the more we grow.
I heard an implicit assumption in there that with along with parking, that you also have to sort of plan for car traffic and other things like that. What strategies do you support to improve improve traffic flow and safety around the city?
I like the way the roundabouts have worked, right? When we start putting started putting them in, people were like, whoa, this is different. You know, we're we're not going to be able to manage that. Well, I think the roundabouts have worked really well. So I don't know, I don't have a specific plan for that. I I would like to see what the the street department has. One of the things that I do experience myself is that, right? We've we've specifically prevented traffic from going through the the neighborhoods, the back neighborhoods, by being able, not being able to cross a creek or a railroad track in in the back neighborhoods and forces everybody to get onto Harmony, for instance. But we should at least allow people on scooters or e-bikes easier access to cross these the tracks and the creeks so that we can get them off of Harmony, right? Because traffic might get slowed down if they're driving next to an e-bike or a scooter. It's like, whoa, that's, you know, dangerous, right? So that's that's the kind of thing that I would look for. How can we better enable alternative modes? It's not necessarily a bus, but, you know, we we probably should be using smaller buses rather than these big buses that are empty all the time because smaller vehicles, you could get attract more drivers. You don't need a special driver's license for the smaller buses than than the big bus. And you could maintain them more easily. They'd be cheaper. So and and, you know, en- enabling alternative modes, the e-bikes and the scooters. I think we need to make sure that we are properly enabling those those modes as best we can.
Yeah, a lot of those strategies have been outlined in the Strategic Trails Plan and the Active Modes Plan and the upcoming Which Wheels Go Where. Is is alternative transit or active active transit modes like bikes and scooters and such what you believe is the biggest infrastructure challenge for Fort Collins?
I don't know if that's the biggest infrastructure challenge. And, you know, having a plan is great, but there's also going to be implementation, right? And, you know, what if your plan says, oh, we're going to build a bridge here, you know? And what if the neighbors don't want that, right? Can can you implement that in a different way to make it more amenable to the neighbors? And so I think that's where a city council person such as myself can really help to go out into the neighborhoods to to figure out, how can this be done in a way that is amenable to the people who live there, right? So I I think that's important for councilperson to to do that kind of outreach. So, but I think I think water is still going to be the big challenge with with, you know, difficult solutions, right? Because we've saved the pooter has been around for a long time. And, you know, how how do we, those kind of environmental concerns are important, right? And so how do we manage the the amount of water available with the Haligan, the growth, the the expansion of Haligan, NISP, and what's happening with Thornton, right? Thornton is trying to get there more water. So I I think water is going to be the biggest challenge, actually.
Yeah, and with the upcoming Water Efficiency Plan that's coming in September, the recommendation from city staff was to an overall reduction in city property use water usage by 2%. And the the larger proportion of the users are residential and commercial, of course. And the the city's overall role in that space seems to be largely advisory. You know, we can serve as a role model in that in that way. What do you see as the particular levers as a as a city councilperson to to help advance sustainability and climate action in that space?
So I I think climate resilience is really the catchphrase that we need to focus on. So, right, if our temperatures are increasing, we need to be able to fight fires, you know, not just in the city, but maybe maybe some of our resources would help fight the fires up in the mountains, right? And ozone attainment, so when I was on the Board of Health, we talked a lot about ozone. And if we, guess what? If we add growth, add population, ozone attainment levels will be even worse. And, you know, a a common solution to that is, well, if your license plate ends in an odd number, you can drive on Monday, Tuesday, you know, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And if your license plate ends in an even number, you can drive the other days. And that's not going to go over well. So it'd be much better to to limit the growth to to try to help things like like ozone. So so the other thing is that I support the Integrated Resource Plan at PRPA, right? So I went to the presentation on that. And Integrated Resource Plan means that they they're going to decommission the rawhide coal burning plant, okay, which is good. A little bit premature for the bondholders, but it's it's okay. It's 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 going to work out. But they will build build a gas-fired peaker plant so that we can still have electricity on dark, calm days, and it could be four days in a row. And so you would need to build a lot of electrical battery storage to not have that gas peaker plant. And and so it what it does is it is it allows us to build more solar and wind power generation because we we haven't gotten to the maximum for that yet. But but to do that at a a reasonable cost increase, right? If we didn't have the gas peaker plant, your electrical cost would be a lot, a lot higher. So, so, yeah, sorry, we can't get to, you know, net zero with the power generation, but we can get pretty close and and at a, you know, more reasonable economically sustainable electric rate level.
So you're not a fan of growth, but affordable housing is a huge topic. And how do we keep the folks here, you are a proponent of small business, not a fan of growth, but the how do we keep the folks here who are working for those small businesses? And what sort of things do you want to see happen to meaningfully improve the the affordable housing situation here in Fort Collins?
Right, so I think what we do need to do is build sort of a public-private partnership with those small businesses like a restaurant association and and work with them to provide housing specifically for their workers, right? So if you look at the ski resort communities, they've got a huge problem providing housing for their workers, you know, where where do their workers stay? And they're temporary, right? And so they're they're basically having to make sure that they reserve the housing, you know? Do they need to build something or or buy something where their people can be housed? And so I think we need to consider the same kind of thing. Let's work with the businesses and see if we can get some of the housing built that meets the needs of their employees and make sure that it's still the code, but, you know, meets the needs of of the businesses. So rather than just, oh, here's some low-cost housing, you know, let's work specifically with the businesses that that need it.
Do you see that also as a solution to help support arts and culture and especially programs and organizations that aren't officially part of the city initiatives?
I think supporting arts and culture is not a housing thing. I think supporting arts and culture is a venue thing. So we got to make sure that the Lincoln Center is kept up and and is cheap enough for musicians to come in and use, right? And so maybe it's somewhat subsidized. So the Triangle area downtown, right? So if we have, you know, free concerts down there that the city pays to make sure that we maintain that venue, maybe the city owns the the audio equipment, right? So that we can have musicians play there. You know, maybe maybe in South Fort Collins, we need a similar venue where to the Triangle where the city can maintain the space and and have a subsidized area where musicians can perform.
Along with the the housing question, what do you view as the city's responsibility in addressing the homelessness and mental health challenges that we are currently facing?
Yeah, so definitely the city has a role with this. My eyes, so I I supported the the tax increase for that we use for Summit Stone Health Partners, right, and that that came about during my term on the Board of Health. My own son is having his mental health challenges right now. I've had to spend quite a bit of time in California where where he lives. He's he's quit his job. Anxiety and depression are real and can can be very debilitating, right? And so, you know, so so mental health is is very important. But not all homeless people are the same. There you you can somewhat categorize those three, maybe four categories. There are certainly people who find themselves unhoused, homeless, who are willing to undergo treatment and are receptive to getting help and intervention. And we need to make sure we have the resources available from the city to give them temporary help because they may not have insurance. And temporarily helping someone who wants to be helped, get up on their feet and be productive again is is just a wonderful thing for the city to be able to do. But there are those people who are homeless, who are resistant to help. They want to continue their drug addiction out on the street, and they want to continue to panhandle. And we do, we are not obligated to enable that behavior. So those those people are are going to have to be dealt with in a way that they may not appreciate. But they've chosen not to 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 want help. So it's not necessarily their choice. We we do not have to enable their choice to ruin our streets, right? So so we're 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 going to need some tough love on those people. There's another category of people who are severely disturbed. And it's not just, oh, I need some therapy. The human brain doesn't always work the way we'd like it to. And, you know, whether it's schizophrenia or some other, you know, severely severe mental illness. We as a society cannot allow our city downtowns to deter to deteriorate because of those individuals living on the streets. Would be much more humane to involuntarily commit these people to a facility where they're cared for and get three meals a day and maybe have a park facility or whatever. But they're they're not allowed to be out on the street, right? You know, I've been to Denver often enough where it's it's just ridiculous. Looking at these people, it's it's ridiculous that the some of them are are walking the streets. It's just, it's not humane. And yet, some of our laws and the and the lawsuits and and the from the mostly from the some of the very left-leaning type nonprofit law centers have have really made it almost impossible for the cities and the states to to take care of these people properly. And it's really a shame. So we need we need to have that discussion as a society and and maybe at the state level. You know, I I don't know that the city can do that by itself, but we need to have some tough discussions on what's really the most humane way to take care of these people.
Having served on the Larimer County Health Board, what were what's some expertise that you feel like you can lend to this area in terms of actionable levers that the city can pull on?
Well, I did a tour of Salud Health Center. I did a ride-along with a nurse family partnership. I I did more right, I I did a ride-along. Um, I, I, I did more ride, I, I did a ride-along with uh someone who does uh the, the restaurant inspection, right? So I think I did more of those ride-alongs and visits of facilities than any other member of the Board of Health. Uh, I mean, there were certainly members who had a health background, which I did not at the time. But I, I really invested my time in, in understanding what the services were that were being provided. The vaccinations, very, very important to have those available, uh, West Nile virus. So I think it's really just, um, it's not necessarily an expertise, but uh just a willingness to reach out and understand the services and, and how you work together inter-agency-wise to, to, to get things done.
Uh, so talking about the needs of particular communities, um, can you describe your understanding of the needs of the LGBTQIA residents and visitors to our community?
So that community is definitely at risk for harassment or hate crimes more so than, than other communities uh within our neighborhoods. And uh, last year, there was a change in the law to uh um, hopefully make it easier for the LGBTQ plus community to report hate crimes. I was actually there at the Capitol when some of the discussion occurred on that. And I, I thought it was very interesting that the Gays Against Groomers organization was there to lobby against the change. They thought it might make it more difficult for gay people to uh report hate crimes. I don't know if that's true, um, uh, but it was, it was interesting to see that discussion take place.
Hey, just a quick note here before we continue with the interview. In general, during a recording, it's not really possible for me to fully fact-check our candidates in real time. And in fact, if I were to do this, I would be so distracted from the conversation. You hear me clicking and checking websites and things like that. But in this instance, it's really important for me to mention that the organization, Gays Against Groomers, is in fact an anti-LGBTQ hate organization, which has been responsible for the harassment of LGBTQ folks and supporters, including hospital workers, drag performers, and even librarians. You can read more about this in the show notes where we reference the Southern Poverty Law Center's website. And now back to the interview.
Every councilman, council member needs to be open to hearing the stories from that community to understand what the needs are. I'm not uh, uh, in that community. One of the board members of the center party uh was a member of that group uh in high school and has, has shared stories with us about the harassment. Uh, and, and it's terrible. It's, it's uh, it's, it's, it's heart-wrenching to, if you go through daily harassment. Um, I'm, I'm not sure that the city can play a huge role in this. Yes, we have to be welcoming. Uh, the, I, I noticed that on the uh police website, they're not, I um posting a, a, uh, a number of crimes that have been reported uh on this category, right? So they're, they're just, they're, they're not reporting that as a, as a numerical uh statistic. Uh, I don't know that we need to in Fort Collins. I think Fort Collins is a very accepting community. Um, uh, so um, you know, I think, I think the most important thing that I can do individually is just be open to listening to, to the stories of, and, and what their needs are. I, 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 I'm right, I, I don't have any specific actions that I think I can take. But I think some of the things I've just said show that I am aware of the, the possible needs. One, one other, one other, just one quick comment. I was also there at the Capitol when State Senator Joanne Genal uh was testifying on the change to the Constitution, Colorado Constitution, to make it in line with the accepted law of gay, accepting gay marriage, right? And so I thought that was an important change to the Constitution, so I was all for that.
Uh, Steve, it's time for rapid-fire questions now. Uh, just say the top thing that comes up to your mind, um, favorite coffee shop?
Uh, Neighbors Downtown on Mason. I, I, I like that, lots of space inside to meet with people.
Favorite brewery?
Zvi at uh Harmony and College.
Favorite park?
Um, that was tough. Um, man, if I could say winter park or steamboat or skiing, I'm a big skier. Uh, but I think, you know, I, 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 I live close to Fossil Creek Park. And that's, that's pretty nice. It's got, it's got a lot of features there.
A horse-toothed hike or a Pooter Trail bike ride?
So my normal bike ride is to go up Mason Trail to Spring Creek Trail. And then uh, uh Prairie, uh Frome Prairie, uh Cathy Frome Prairie. So I did do a pretty big loop there. When I used to live uh on Waterstone Court, I would do the Pooter Bike Trail. But I've, I've certainly hiked horse-tooth numerous times, but the, the biking is, is more common for me.
Favorite book?
I'd have to say Atlas Shrugged. I, I read that a long time ago and it made an impression on me.
If someone was trying to get ahold of you, do you prefer phone call, email, or text?
Um, you know, I do all three. Uh, you know, some people don't want to do text or email. It's like phone only. I'm fine with all three and it just depends on the length of the conversation that's needed.
Are you an early bird or night owl?
I'm definitely a night owl.
What's your favorite nonprofit in town?
I would probably say Salvation Army.
One word to describe Fort Collins?
It's awesome.
And if you uh could snap your fingers and just change anything about Fort Collins, what would it be?
You know, I don't think I would try to change anything. I think there are too many people who are trying to change it and we don't necessarily need the change.
Uh, and if you weren't running for office this year, what would you be doing?
Well, I'd probably be spending more time with my son who needs help. And I'd probably be doing a lot more motorcycle riding. And, and skiing is a big deal to me. When I, when I first retired, I skied 45 days at, that winter.
Is there anything else you'd like a listener to know about you or your campaign?
You know, the center party is important to me. I do spend a lot of time uh with the, the center party. Uh, building a third party has been an interesting journey. Uh, and it, it, it means that I think we need more balance in all of our government institutions. Um, having a vibrant democracy is very important to me. Listening to both sides is important, but also rejecting the extremes from both sides is important.
Steve, where can we learn more about you and your campaign?
Yurash is spelled Y-U-R-A-S-H.
Steve, thanks so much for joining me today and all the best to, to you on your campaign. Uh, best wishes to you and your son and as you navigate that very difficult mental health journey. Uh, and uh, thanks for joining us here on, on Dear Fort Collins.